All right. Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the Planning Commission of the City of Moreno Valley. I now call this meeting to order on November thirteenth, twenty twenty-five, at six oh one P. M. Okay, can we start with the roll call?
Commissioner Zeitz?
Here.
Commissioner Terrell?
Here.
Commissioner Taylor?
Here.
Commissioner Stefan is absent. Vice Chair Baker?
Here.
Chairperson Dejeanay?
Here.
And Chair, Commissioner Stefan asked to be excused for this meeting due to a death in the family. Can we have a motion to approve the excusal?
Okay, so we would need a motion and a second for the
So moved.
Okay, a motion?
A second.
Yeah, okay.
Of a vote.
I'm sorry, for the record, who was the second?
I was.
For this one, we'll do a roll call vote. Commissioner Zeitz?
Yes.
Commissioner Terrell?
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor?
Yes.
Vice Chair Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Dejeanay?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, I now invite Commissioner Terrell to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
By the United States of America and choose a way for which you stand visible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, all right, we're now going to move to the approval of the agenda. Do we have a motion and a second?
I'll move that we approve the agenda submitted.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
Commissioner Taylor, are you able to vote?
Oh. I didn't press submit, my, I'm sorry.
All right. The motion is approved. Okay, before we hear public comments this evening, I ask and encourage everyone participating to keep their comments respectful towards other. I embrace and support the First Amendment right to free speech. Any one person, any person wishing to speak under the agendaized item or non-agendized item should fill out a request to speak form that's available at the door and submit the form to the secretary prior to the end of the public comment period. During the public comment period, for each member of the public will have a maximum of three minutes to speak. The public must direct their comments to the chairperson of the commission. Do we have any public comments?
We have no comment cards, sir. However, we did receive a public comment prior to this meeting, and you'll find that memo stapled and on the dais for you.
I did. Thank you. The next item on agenda is approval of the consent calendar. All items under the consent calendar are considered to be routine and non-controversial and may be enacted by a motion unless a member of the commission requests that the item be removed for separate action. Items withdrawn for report or discussion will be heard before action on the consent calendar. Questions or comments from the public on the consent calendar matter must pertain to the subject under consideration. At this time, would any commissioner like to pull an item from the consent calendar for a separate discussion? No rush there, okay? All right. Do we have any public comments for items on the consent calendar?
We have no comment cards.
Okay, I have a motion and a second for the consent calendar.
Okay, I'll move that we accept the consent calendar submitted.
Second.
Okay, the motion does carry. All right, we, the next item is non-public hearing items, and it looks like we don't have any non-public hearing items this evening. Therefore, we'll move to the next item, and that's going to be public hearing items. We have public hearing item number one, which is a tentative track map number thirty-eight-nine-five-five P. N. Twenty-five-zero-zero-five-eight. We have a plot plan, which is P. N. Twenty-four-zero-zero-five-nine, and variances, P. N. Twenty-four-zero-one-four-four and P. N. Twenty-four-zero-zero-nine-five for District Number Two. Do we have a staff report?
Thank you. Good evening, Chair. We have Associate Planner Grace Espino Salcello presenting.
Good evening, Chairman and members of the Planning Commission. Grace Espino Salcello, Associate Planner. The project before you this evening is a request to consider a tentative track map for condominium purposes, a plot plan for the development of one hundred and thirty-nine attached multifamily residential units, and two variances. The proposed project is located on the north side of Box Springs Road, east of Morton Road, and west of Louisiana Avenue. It is comprised of three contiguous parcels totaling nine point three-three. The project site has a land use designation of residential office and a zoning designation of residential fifteen, which allows for multifamily residential development at a maximum allowable density of fifteen dwelling units per acre. Surrounding land uses include established single-family residential developments to the north and northeast in the R-five zoning district, a multifamily residential development to the west in the R-twenty district, an office building to the east in the office zone, and commercial uses to the south in the community commercial. The project site is currently developed with a linear strip mall consisting of offices and storefronts proposed for demolition as part of this project. Tentative track map number three-eight-nine-five-five proposes to subdivide nine point three-three gross acres comprised of three contiguous parcels into airspaces for condominium purposes. The map includes associated internal private streets, a bioretention basin located at the northwest corner of the project site, and bioretention trenches along Box Springs Road. Post-project complies with the city's development standards for tentative track maps. The plot plan proposes the development of one hundred and thirty-nine attached multifamily townhome units. The gated community will consist of twenty-nine two-story buildings designed in a Spanish-influenced architectural style, including concrete roof tile, brick, stucco finish, window shutters, and other architectural design features such as decorative ceramic tile, clay pipes, and metal railings. The two- and three-bedroom units will range in size from a thousand seventy-one to one thousand four hundred and thirty-nine square feet, each provided with a private garage and private open space. In addition, the project will include recreational amenities such as a clubhouse, swimming pool, a gym, and over an acre of common open space areas, including a trail that will connect directly to the neighboring park to the northeast corner of the property. The proposed project includes enclosed garages, alleyways, and sixty-nine guest parking spaces. Residential dwelling unit will be equipped with an enclosed one-car or two-car garage. Two-bedroom units are proposed with one-car and two-car configurations, while three-bedroom units will include two-car garage, a two-car garage complying with municipal code requirements. The proposed project will take access from a main gated entry on Box Springs Road with a gated emergency access driveway provided from a secondary location along the project's frontage on Box Springs Road. Internal circulation will be facilitated by internal private streets, private garages, and guest parking. Pedestrian pathways for non-vehicular onsite circulation will connect to the onsite recreational amenities and recreational trail at the northeast corner of the project site. Outdoor lighting will provide wall-mounted lights and pole-mounted lights along the proposed internal private streets. Pedestrian path of travel will feature bollard lighting in addition to accent lighting throughout the proposed common recreation areas. All project landscaping is subject to the requirement of the City of Moreno Valley Municipal Code and the final approved fuel modification plan. All planter beds within the common areas will consist of water-efficient shrubs and ground cover with a variety of shade trees and accent trees within the project site. The proposed project, as designed, satisfies the city's parking, lighting, and landscape requirements. The city's municipal code, Section nine point zero-three-point-zero-four-zero F-one for residential site development standards, includes special multifamily residential development standards in the multifamily residential district, including the R-fifteen zone, that require buildings exceeding a single-story in height to maintain a minimum building setback of fifty feet from any single-family residential district. A single-story building within these districts requires a minimum setback of twenty feet from any single-family residential district. The applicant is requesting approval of variance P. N. Two-four-dash-zero-one-four-four, which would allow the required fifty-foot rear yard setback to be measured from any residential structure exceeding one story on the project site to the property line of any parcel containing a residential structure in the adjacent residential subdivision since there is an existing intervening easement that precludes the development of a single-family development or a single-family structure within said easement. The project proposes a minimum rear yard setback of twenty-one feet between the northernmost multi-story building on the project site's rear property line. An intervening easement of approximately forty-one feet in width exists between the proposed project's rear property line and the property line of the residential subdivision to the north. There is a distance of approximately sixty-three feet from the proposed project's multi-story building and the nearest residential property line to the north, and seventy-five feet between the proposed project's multi-story building and the nearest residential structure to the north. An analysis by the city attorney's office determined that it is reasonable to allow the fifty-foot rear yard setback of the proposed project to be measured from any residential structure exceeding one story on the project site to the property line of any parcel containing a residential structure in the adjacent residential subdivision since there is an existing intervening easement that precludes the development of a single-family development or a single-family structure within said easement. Furthermore, it was also determined reasonable to apply the same section in the same manner because the setback requirement was presumably established to mitigate privacy intrusions from multi-story residential structures into neighboring residential backyards in adjacent residential subdivisions. As such, if there are no adjacent residential backyards due to an intervening easement or other dedicated land that may not be used to build a residential structure with a backyard, the issue of privacy intrusion does not seem to be an issue. In light of the foregoing, the city attorney's office recommended that staff consider recommending to the planning commission and the city council to consider amending Section nine point zero-three-point-zero-four-zero F-one to be consistent with this recommended application of the rear setback for multi-story structures in the R-ten, R-fifteen, R-twenty, and R-thirty residential districts. Municipal code, Section nine point zero-eight-point-zero-seven-zero for fences and walls, states that retaining walls located on the boundary between two residential parcels may not exceed three feet, and the combination of a solid retaining and non-retaining wall or fence may not exceed eight feet solid. Variance P. N. Two-four-dash-zero-zero-nine-five would allow perimeter retaining and non-retaining walls up to a maximum combined height of twelve feet along the north and west property lines with tentative track map number three-eight-nine-five-five. This variance would allow perimeter retaining walls along the north and westerly property lines with tentative track map number three-eight-nine-five-five to be increased due to constraints posted, constraints posed to the project site by existing boundary elevations along the north and west property lines. The proposed retaining wall along the west property line would alleviate drainage issues created by the existing low point, which will require backfilling to allow for positive drainage on the property. The northerly property line butts a concrete drainage channel that runs through forty-one foot-wide easement between the project site and the existing single-family residential development to the north. The proposed retaining walls have been reduced in height to the maximum extent possible by including two-to-one slopes down to the walls, and they will not be visible from the public right-of-way. The proposed retaining walls will be constructed of decorative materials, including split-face rock block along the northerly property line and split-face block with a decorative tubular steel fence on top of the wall along the westerly property line. The proposed project complies with Chapter nine point fourteen, Land Division, Sections nine point zero-two-point-zero-seven-zero Plot Plan, and nine point zero-two-point-one-hundred for variances, all applicable development standards of the zoning code. With the recommended conditions of approval, staff recommends that the planning commission adopt resolutions number twenty-two-five-dash-sixteen, twenty-two-five-dash-seventeen, and twenty-two-five-dash-eighteen. This concludes staff's presentation. I am available for any questions. The applicant, Brian Bergeron, and eminent consultant Deborah Light are here tonight and available for any questions. Thank you.
Well, thank you. I have to say to record, that was the longest staff report that I've ever. Thank you.
Whether to apologize or say thank you.
No, no, it's, it was fantastic. That was a lot of information. I, I enjoyed it immensely. Are there any commissioner questions for staff? All right.
Is it pertaining, this is not pertaining to the fire plan, just, just general staff report, right?
Right, to this, this staff report.
Okay. I got several questions. Can staff confirm that the traffic study accounted for all the new homes and nearby developments already approved or under construction?
Yes.
How would this project affect morning and evening traffic on Morton Road, Box Springs Road, and Lewis Avenue and local intersections?
The overall development only generate less than a hundred cars per peak hours, so the impact is very insignificant.
Okay, during the construction or emergencies, will residents still have two reliable ways in and out of the neighborhood?
Yes.
Okay, I got more, more questions. Has the school district confirmed that it could handle the new students from this project?
The school district is notified when we do a project, but we don't, they don't normally give us any input. Thank you.
Will the new storm drain system be able to handle heavy rain without flooding nearby streets or properties?
Yeah, the answer is yes. The, the post-development flow will be equal, either equal or less than the pre-development flows.
How will maintenance of this drainage system be handled by the home, homeowner association or the city?
So, a little over half of the drainage drains to the north of the project, and which means probably around forty percent of it is going to drain to, to the street to the south. And in terms of, in terms of the bioretention basin that's on-site, as well as the three bioretention trenches that are along the south part of the site, those will all be maintained by the homeowners' association.
Couple more. Who would be responsible for maintaining the landscaping, storm drains, and fuel modification areas, the HOA or, or the city?
That would be the homeowners' association.
Will there be regular inspections to make sure all these safety improvement features stay in good shape?
Good evening, Planning Commissioners. Edgar Gonzalez, Fire Marshal with the city. And the answer is yes. We do have an annual fire inspection program that we conduct yearly for all, that's required by the state to conduct annual inspections on all multifamily dwellings, and we will make sure that, that the HOA adheres to the recorded CCNRs for the development, for the defensible space.
Well, here's a question that I'm going to throw back at you. How are you going to hold, hold the HOA responsible? Are there any accountability measures if they don't? What if they don't? Then what happens?
We, for non-compliant circumstances, we do issue notices of violation until we achieve compliance, and we revert back to these recorded CCNRs that we have throughout the approval of the project.
Okay, let me see. Oh, the demolition. When they're gonna, they, when, when the edis, well, the, the, the current power lines, are they going to be grounded in, are they going to be underground, or when they, when they put the new ones, are they going to be underground?
So I believe that, I believe that there is one power pole that's located on the project site, and so that would be, that power pole would be removed, and the facilities would need to be undergrounded to the nearest power pole, which I believe is on the south side of the, of the street. So yes, it would be undergrounded.
Thank you. The easement that's to the north, what is that easement for?
Open space, I'm sorry. It's an open space easement, I'm sorry, owned by the homeowners' association for the development across the, to the north.
So there's no chance of any building going in there?
That is correct.
And then, with your garage parking, is there going to be street parking inside the facility?
There is parking within the facility. There are sixty-nine guest parking spaces.
But no curbside parking?
No, curbside parking.
Okay. My eyeballs back on here, sorry. The retaining wall that they're wanting to do, is it retaining basically the soil from coming onto the property or from the property onto other soil, other areas? In other words, is it sloped to the property or away from the property?
Sloping to, to the property.
It'll stop?
So it's containing the soil from going outside?
Outside, okay. Thank you. Are there any other questions? Got another?
Well, this is about the fire, the fire plan, specifically with the fire plan. Can you confirm which fire stations would, would respond to this project if there was a fire?
Currently, we would have Fire Station Six is the closest due, Fire Station Forty-eight, second closest due, and third closest due would be Fire Station Two.
And based on those response data, would the firefighters from Station Six or Station Two be able to get there within the four or five minutes?
Yes.
If Station Six happens to be out on another call, do we still have coverage through backup stations or mutual aid to make sure help comes fast?
Correct, yeah. So the other units within the battalion would come and respond, or, and we do have a mutual aid agreement with the City of Riverside Fire Department.
And this is, Mr. Chair, this is about the water supply and hydrants, so I wanted to ask a couple of questions about that. The fire plan says the project will have hydrants throughout the site, providing over fifteen hundred gallons of water per minute. Is that more than what's normal required for neighborhoods of this size?
Correct, yeah. That's based on the square footage of the structures and construction classification.
And will the hydrants be close enough together for the engines to reach every home safely?
The underground fire service main, the private fire underground service main for this particular project will be required to meet the NFPA twenty-four requirements when the plans are submitted.
And has the water district confirmed that the system has the pressure and backup power to deliver the water during an emergency?
Yes, sir.
But this is about the defensible space means. I'm just going down the list because I want to know this stuff, and I think the public would like to know. And about, now about a hundred feet of the clear maintained space around the homes, who's responsible for keeping that up year after year?
That would be the homeowners' association.
Okay. And what happens if someone replaces their landscaping later with plants that aren't, aren't fire safe?
That would be caught throughout the annual fire inspection that we have and noted on our correction notice for correction.
Yeah, I got a couple more. All right, let me see. Let's see here. Oh, and during a major fire, who will, how will the traffic control be handled on streets like Morton Drive or Box Springs so things don't get backed up?
The capacity of Box, Box Springs is capable to handle four thousand cars per hour, so the capacity is more than sufficient, traffic capacity.
Okay.
Four thousand cars per hour.
So will, will there be widening of Box Springs, anything like that?
No, there are no widening. Basically, during the emergency, that's going to be one-way evacuation, four thousand car per hour, so capacity is more than sufficient.
And then also, the fire plan says about use fire-resistant roofs, vents, and windows in every unit will have sprinklers. Will your team, sir, check that during the plan review and inspect process?
Correct, yeah. When we review the architectural plans, we will make sure that it conforms with the California Building Code, Chapter Seventy, for structural hardening, and we will also conduct inspections for all the fire protection systems throughout the construction of the development.
Yes, yes. The question is, based on your experience, I guess, is, is high-density projects versus like low densities, what are best against fire? I mean, the spread of fire. What is it, a high-density or low-density projects? I mean, homes?
The only thing I can speak of throughout the review of this project on the planning case stages is that it did meet the California Building Code requirements for allowable areas, and it will have structural hardening, so it will meet the code requirements.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Are there any other commissioner questions for staff?
You have it at all?
No, yeah. All right, well, if there were no other questions, okay, all right, we'll open the
Chair, I just have a comment. Anytime a developer violates any of our conditions of approval, in addition to taking code action like issuing notices of violations or citations or public nuisance notices, we can also subject their permits to suspension or even refocation or modification.
Thank you. All right. All right, so we'll now open the public uh, hearing at six twenty-nine P. Oh, I'm sorry, no wait, hang on, yeah. Just making sure. Yeah, no, we need this, the applicant. Where's the applicant?
Right down there.
Yeah. It looks like it skips a little section here, but I know that we'd like to hear from the applicant.
Good evening, Chair. Vice Chair Commissioners, my name is Brian Bergeron. I'm the Vice President of Forma Specific Group. Uh, just wanna thank Grace and the planning staff and the rest of the uh, city staff uh, working on this project. It's been a, a process to make sure that we're all uh, on the same page as far as compliance with fire um, and all the city development guidelines. I'm sure you guys have more questions for me. I think Grace did a fantastic job outlining all this, so she took all my thunder. But uh, this is a one-hundred-and-thirty-nine uh, unit townhome project. It is fully gated. Um, it does have uh, common area recreational amenities for the, uh, the owners to utilize. Um, and this is our second project here uh, within the last couple of years in the City of Moreno Valley. So looking forward to seeing this one through the finish line and get this one complete. So let me know if you guys have any questions. I have my consultants here as well. Uh, if you have any specific questions regarding engineering or SEQA, uh, they're here as well to answer anything you guys may have.
Oh, thank you very much. No, that's a pretty good line of questioning there, sir. Only thing I thought was missing was what's the next lottery numbers? Okay, you have a question for the applicant? Yeah, with the one and two-car garage, with everything going all electric, are you going to have basically the garage wired so they can put in their charging units if necessary?
Yeah, so per building code, uh, is, is required to have those facilities available as far as uh, four-car uh, charging stations. So we will comply with the building code requirements there. Um, this will be an all-electric community besides the gas feed to the um, the restroom or the poolhouse area for the pool.
That's all-electric for all the dwelling units?
That's correct.
And is that, that's two-forty in the garage or is that something that, that each resident will have to upgrade in order to?
No, it'll be a two-hundred amp panel, two-hundred, two-forty uh, that will be included for them to plug in their uh, charging station. So everything will be ready for them to do.
And you're, you're saying also gas uh, for stove as well?
No, gas would just,
I'm sorry, electric.
Yeah, gas would just be for the uh, the clubhouse.
Uh, sir, thank you for investing in our community again. Um, my question is, I was reading, so when you're, when people buy into your, your uh, homes, they will know going into it that they have to follow every, every, the, the rules as far as the fire prevention, like the education was it says in the fire plan. They gonna, so they, will they be given something that shows that they have to go through the training? As part of the fire plan, that's, that's why I'm asking that.
Yeah, so um, anytime we transition any type of property, they get full disclosures of, you know, the high fire zone. Um, we notify them of any type of uh, obligations through the rules and regulations that are created, the CCNRs, the government documents for the community. So every homeowner will have to sign off that they have acknowledged that they're aware of these items.
Thank you. On the homeowners association, is that outsourced to a separate company or is that something that's handled within uh, the group?
So it's, it's an outsourced, so we find a property manager or a community manager to maintain these facilities. Um, we don't know who that is yet, but it's an outs, it's a, it's a third party that we hire to conduct it.
Okay, so with that third party in mind, they act, do they actually come up with, what they would consider the rates are for the homeowners association?
No, that's done through uh, us. So we hire a DRE budget preparer. And so as we're going through the DRE process with the state, we have to prepare a budget along with all the uh, legal documents that gets submitted to the state DRE office. They review it and approve the DRE budget or the, the operating budget it is. And that will have all the components for operating that, that association.
Okay, so that, that price, it's a set price?
Correct.
Okay, all right, coming into it. Any other commissioner questions for the applicant? Well, thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Yeah, I think I was a little bit behind there. So we'll now open the public testimony hearing at six thirty-four PM. Uh, we'll move into public comments. The clerk will call upon each person who has requested to speak. Um, do we have any speakers?
We have no comment cards.
Do we have any speakers? I'm not used to this. I just make sure I'd ask again. That's pretty unusual. Okay. For what, they said a hundred-and-thirty-nine units and. All right, well, if there are no speakers uh, for public testimony, then we'll close the public testimony right at six thirty-four and move into deliberations. Or do we have a motion in second for, to accept the staff recommendation?
Start off, I, you know, I think this is a good addition to this area of the city there. That's been there in the fifties and sixties and it's a big plus. I, I like the project and these people have done a good job. I don't, I don't know where the other project is here in town, but I'm sure it was a good, good project and uh, I'm gonna vote for it. It's a good job.
I'd like to say um, uh, kudos to, to my colleague here. But also too, this is, seems like to me a model of fire protection that, that's a model that, that all our developments that are, that are developing these fire zones, this is a, a good model. I like this one because it takes into account of the residents, it takes of the surrounding neighborhoods, it has a plan. And, and also too, more housing is, is good, it's, it's a good thing. And it has the infrastructure that goes along with it. So to me, it's a high-quality uh, project. So I will be supporting it and good thing. Thank you.
No? No one else? I, I'd like to say, I, I really like to see that uh, you know, we're going all electric, we're being environmentally friendly. You know, me myself owning a couple of electric cars, I wish that I'd, my house was brand-new, but it was not ready. So I had to go out and hire contractors and so that I didn't have to go run out to uh, charging stations all the time. And that's, that's a big plus for the residents. Uh, I know that uh, people have growing pains in the, moving into electric cars, but once I got one, I wasn't done. And I tell you what, charging in my garage every day is a plus. Electric stoves is a plus. We got a nice um, you know, environmentally friendly footprint that looks like that's gonna go. I know we're gonna have a little traffic uh, in addition, but being so close to the edge out there, I mean, we're right there by the, the, the entrance to the sixty freeway. I mean, that's gonna, they'll be able to um, get in and get out. I, I would hope so. And uh, there's a couple of businesses up there. So we're talking, yeah, that, that little strip mall right there is gonna be demolished. That, that's to the south of the projected. Right, okay. All right, um, no, I, I, I like it. I think it's, it's great. My intention is also say yes to the project. I don't have anything uh, in opposition for it. Um, anyone? Yeah, any, anyone? Where we at? You got it sitting right there?
You ready for a motion?
Yeah.
I move that we adopt resolution um, twenty-twenty-five dash sixteen, which adopts the uh, study of the mitigated uh, ne- negative declaration prepared by the track, uh, tentative track number thirty-eight nine fifty-five. And it's a PN twenty-four oh fifty-eight. And then uh, also on B is adopting the um, the mitigation monitoring and reporting program for this project also. And then on number two, we're gonna adopt resolution uh, twenty-twenty-five dash seventeen, which is approving the tentative track map, um, thirty-eight nine fifty-five PN twenty-four oh oh five eight. And then the next thing is adopt uh, resolution twenty-twenty-five dash eighteen, approving the variances submitted um, with the exhibit A. Okay?
Second?
Okay, all right. Do we have a uh, vote, please? Okay, the motion does carry. Do we have a staff wrap-up?
Thank you, Chair. The action of the planning commission is an appealable action. Anyone wishing to appeal the decision of the commission must do so by filing an appeal application with the Community Development Department and paying the applicable filing fee within ten calendar days of the action. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, the next item on the agenda is item number two, which is the municipal code amendment PN twenty-five zero-one four-nine. Do we have a staff report?
Thank you, Chair. Yes, Senior Planner Miguel Del Rio will be presenting.
Thank you, Chairman and members of the Planning Commission. Miguel Del Rio, Senior Planner. The item before you this evening is the Fall Twenty-Twenty-Five Omnibus Municipal Code Amendment. This municipal code amendment revises and updates various sections of Title Nine of the Municipal Code for the purposes of clarifying and streamlining various entitlement processes as well as complying with the new state laws regarding housing. The proposed amendments are as follows. Amend section nine point zero-two point zero-three-zero titled Development Review Process to remove large family daycare permit from the Development Review Index, eliminating the requirement for a minim, minor development review for the proposed family daycare home, ensuring consistency with Senate Bill Two Thirty-four. Amend section nine point zero-two point one-one-zero titled Development Agreements to repeal the language of this section and establish the authority, procedures and requirements for the city to enter into development agreements with property owners. It outlines mandatory and optional agreement terms and requires public hearings before both the Planning Commission and the City Council. Repeal section nine point zero-two point one-four-zero titled Small and Large Family Daycare Homes Standards in Residential Dwelling Units in its entirety to eliminate the requirement for a ministerial review for family daycare homes, ensuring consistency with Senate Bill Two Thirty-four. Amend section nine point zero-two point two-three-zero titled Expiration Dates and Extension of Time to repeal and replace the language in its entirety to implement procedural updates. Amend section nine point zero-three point zero-five-zero titled Density Bonus Program for Affordable Housing to update the term childcare facility to child daycare facility and refine the definition to include age limitations and clarify that the care provided is to be non-medical, ensuring alignment with the requirements of Senate Bill Two Thirty-four. Amend section nine point zero-three point zero-seven-zero titled Streamline Ministerial Approval Process, Senate Bill Four Twenty-three, formerly SB Thirty-five, to reflect the amendments made to the previous housing streamlining law by Assembly Bill Three-One Twenty-two, allowing developers more flexibility in modifying approved housing projects. Introduce section nine point zero-three point one-zero-zero titled Objective Design Standards to establish objective design standards for multifamily and mixed-use developments that are not governed by objective design standards of an existing specific plan. In support of this new code section, a standalone document titled City of Moreno Valley Objective Design Standards for Multifamily and Mixed Use Residential Developments was created to streamline housing development approvals by providing a clear, measurable and verifiable requirements for the design of multifamily and mixed-use developments. Amend section nine point zero-four point zero-five-zero titled Affordable Housing in Commercial Zones to repeal and replace the language of the section to streamline the development of affordable and mixed-income housing on commercially-zoned properties, ensuring consistency with Assembly Bill Twenty-two Forty-three. Introduce section nine point zero-seven point zero-nine-zero titled By Right Floating Housing Overlay, BRFH Zoning District, to comply with the requirements of state housing law. The purpose of the By Right Floating Housing Overlay, or BRFH Overlay, is to promote the development of housing on sites locally identified to satisfy the city's lower-income regional housing needs allocation or arena. Amend section nine point zero-nine point zero-three-zero titled Adult Businesses to refine the definition of child daycare facility to include age limitations and clarify that the care provided is not medical, ensuring alignment with the requirements of Senate Bill Two Thirty-four. Amend section nine point zero-nine point one-three-zero titled Accessory Dwelling Units, ADUs, to remove subjective language to address the California Department of Housing and Community Development, or HCD's, comments and to reflect changes made uh, to junior ADUs under both AB eleven fifty-four and SB five forty-three. Amend section nine point zero-nine point three-eight-zero titled Wireless Communication Facilities to repeal and replace the language of the section and establish regulation for the placement, design and permitting of wireless communication facilities throughout the city and outline the requirements for an administrative use permit for smaller or low, co-located facilities and a conditional use permit for major installations. Introduce section nine point zero-nine point three-nine-zero titled Demolition of Housing Units to establish regulations for the replacement of housing units that are or have been demolished as part of a development project consistent with AB uh, twelve eighteen. And lastly, amend section nine point one-five point zero-three-zero titled Definitions to refine the definition of child daycare facility, family daycare home and large family daycare home, ensuring consistency with the provisions of SB Two Thirty-four. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission approve Resolution Number Twenty-Twenty-Five dash twenty-three, recommending that the City Council find that the municipal code amendment is exempt from SEQA and introduce and adopt ordinance next in order approving the municipal code amendments based on the findings set forth in the attached Planning Commission Resolution. Uh, this concludes my presentation. I am available for any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any commissioner questions for staff? No. And I, I guess mine is just a clarifying question. That's a lot of different sections. And I understand that this is in order for us to be in compliance with SB uh, Two Thirty-four.
That Senate Bill as well as other Senate Bills that were recently uh, brought into law.
In, in general, this is opening, is that increasing the amount of children that could be in a daycare? I, I think I saw the number fourteen or something like that?
Right. What SB Two Thirty-four does is that it requires that large family daycare homes, which are defined as fourteen or less children, um, to be treated as a residential use of a property as opposed to a business use. Uh, and this, uh, this will prohibit the requirement for a business license. Um, and the city must treat it as a residential use. And um, uh, we can no longer ask a um, large family daycare facility to go through an entitlement process or a business license.
Or is there a cap on the amount of?
Correct. So anything over fourteen would not fall under the definition and would go through the, the standard um, administrative plot plan or conditional use permit depending on the number of children.
Okay, one to fourteen, regular commercial home, over fourteen, then you can acquire a business license operating as a commercial business.
Correct.
That's, that's my, okay. Any other commissioner questions?
Um, nine point zero-seven point zero-nine, By Right Floating Housing Overlay. Now, explain that district, uh, what that, what that does.
Sure, and uh, we, we have Claudia here um, that can help answer that, that question.
Explain what that, in our, in our realm.
Yeah, so.
Name it, sir. I'm sorry.
Good evening. Um, so the floating by right housing is a requirement of our housing element. So we're just putting the language in to have the development standards for if anybody wants to use the by right. And at certain properties, and the, the map is in the housing element.
Or if it's um, if we say we are, as it says, uh, we have a shortfall in our arena numbers when it comes to um, low-income um, allocations.
Yes, so all the property that is covered by this overlay is currently zoned commercial. This is allowing the property owner to have a way to do. This is allowing the property owner to have a way to do any residential use, as long as it includes low density at 20% of what they're proposing for the site at an R30 standard.
R30 standard?
Yes.
Another question. So that means they, developer could use this provision? Basically use this provision to get their development, to get it off the ground?
Yes, and to build high-density multifamily housing on property that's currently zoned commercial. So this is basically the parcels located at Moreno Beach Drive and Alessandro Boulevard.
And that has to have a public hearing?
No. It's part, because of the low-income element, then they're allowed to streamline under state law, and then it becomes a ministerially approved. Sorry for my not speaking correctly. And actually, the Community Development Director would be the one approving the project.
So this Commission and my fellow colleagues won't, will never see it. It won't, it won't come before us, because it's, it's not a public hearing that's required.
That is correct.
Interesting.
Any other? Sounds like you got another one.
So basically, they're taking our power of our local control basic on land development, Sacramento is, per se. Well, that's what I'm asking. This, this is basically take the power out of our, as far as Planning Commission. It takes the power away from us. Is that correct, Mr. City Attorney?
Priving us of local control over this particular issue. That's what the state has done.
So any project that, that fits this overlay, we would never see it, never see it, except for the planning to make the ministerial decision.
Commissioner Terrell, that, it could be interpreted that way, that yes, because of the state law that the local control is being reduced. And just to clarify, so these are projects that would be in commercial areas that have an affordability component to it.
Okay.
Any other Commissioner question? Are we the final decision, or does this go to council?
This will go to council as well.
Any other Commissioner questions for staff? Okay, all right, if there are no other Commissioner questions for staff, we'll now open a public hearing at 6:52 PM and move on to public comments. The clerk will call upon each person who has requested to speak. Do we have any speakers?
We have no comment cards there.
All right, if there's no other speakers, we'll close the deliberate, I'm sorry, the public comment period at 6:53 PM and move into deliberations. Or do we have a motion in a second? You have to go back. Here's my sheet here.
I am going to take a stab at this. Okay, so I recommend a motion to approve Resolution Number 2025-23, recommending that the City Council find that PN 25-0149 is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. Be an adopt ordinance approving PN 25-0149 based on the findings set forth in the attached Planning Commission Resolution. The summary is that this Municipal Code Amendment PN dash, PN 25-0149 revises various sections of Title IX, planning and zoning.
I'll second that. He died. Uh-oh, looks like we're having some technical-
It's up now.
No, his is, his is blank, yeah. It went, it went back, so we'll have to have a-
A roll call vote? Commissioner Zites?
No.
Commissioner Terrell?
Yeah.
Commissioner Taylor?
Yes.
Vice Chair Baker?
Yes.
Chair President Dejeanay?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, do we have a staff wrap-up?
Thank you Chair. The recommendation of the Planning Commission will be agendized and presented to the City Council at a future meeting.
Okay. And the next item on the agenda is other Commissioner business, and it doesn't look like we have any other Commissioner business. Do we have any staff comments?
Thank you Chair. Planning Commission, I do want to take an opportunity to thank Danielle Harper Scott, as today is her last day with the city of Moreno Valley. We wish her best in her future endeavors, and just want to let you all know how much we appreciated all of her work and her dedication to the city and to the department, and thank you.
Wow, she didn't say anything.
Why you didn't tell us?
Thank you all, I appreciate working with you all, and good luck with you guys as well.
Well, we hope that you're successful in any endeavors that you may pursue. Well, thank you, it was nice hearing your reports, that sort of thing, and your smiling face, and sometimes, you know, the gleam dying as you're, no. Going long on these meetings, but no, we appreciate you. Hopefully you take that experience and, yeah, move on and be successful, make a lot of money, and come back and give us also.
And Chair, just happy Thanksgiving to all of you.
Yeah, and thinking about that, I'm sorry, before we go on, the next item on the agenda is Planning Commissioner comments. Do we have any Planning Commissioner comments?
The only thing I'd like, I'd wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving also.
Mine is, my heart and prayers go out to Joanne, and yet I'm sure that we, we all as well, and hopefully that, you know, and she knows and she watches as we're all here for her. I'll, I'll give her a call as well, and prayers, so that's about as much as I can say about that. But I am looking here, it says, if we adjourn here to our next regular Planning Commission is the 27th, isn't that around, that's Thanksgiving, isn't it? We coming in on Thanksgiving?
It's technically scheduled, but we'll, we'll put a notice.
All right, all right, well, the Planning Commission meeting is adjourned at 6:58 PM to our regular next meeting on November 27, 2025, at 6:00 PM. Yeah, it is, thanks.